Good evening. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals December 18th, 2023 meeting. I'd like to start out with some housekeeping. I'd like to get a motion to approve a bill for $361.90 to the Community Advocate for the December 18th, 2023 legal notices.
Move to approve?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next hearing. I'm going to hand it over to Peter.
So our first hearing is a continuation of a hearing from our November 27, 2023 meeting relating to a application for two variances under Section 7, Table 2, at 130 High Street in the Residence B1 District. Could the proponent come forward?
Hello?
Good evening. If you could identify yourself and your address for the record.
Sure. My name is Michelle Cassis from 130 High Street, Shrewsbury. With me is my brother Andre.
Oh, this is right. Sorry, apologies. Before we get going, please take a seat.
Sure.
So we have an alternate member participating tonight. Mr. Byrne was not present for the last meeting, but he will sign a letter attesting that he has reviewed the evidence and a recording of the previous meeting so he can participate in the debate with your consent.
Good enough, sure.
Okay. So if you pass that down to Mr. Byrne to sign.
Sure.
And then we'll also ask the applicant to sign. If you could approach. You can just acknowledge right there. Sure, of course. Okay, thank you. Alright, so apologies if you, again, could identify yourself by name and your address for the record.
Sure. My name is Michelle Cassis from 130 High Street in Shrewsbury.
Good evening.
I have my brother Andre with me, and he lives in Shrewsbury as well. If it's okay with the board, I would like him to sit with me at the table and assist me if needed.
No objections from the board? Yeah, please. And again, if you could also identify yourself by name and your address.
Andre Cassis, 53 North Street.
Great. So I think last time we granted a continuance to this meeting because there was some new information that had come to light. I believe where things were left off was that the foundation appeared to be partially over the neighboring yard, and you let us know at the meeting that that, the part that appeared to be offending, had been cut off and that you were going to come forward with a certified plot plan, an additional information, and a proposal for where you'd like the shed to go?
Yes, that is correct.
Great.
So you should have the plot plan with you. It should be visible to you all. I loaded it up to the portal. And so I would like to build a shed because I have some overflow of typical stuff that you would like to store in a shed in my garage. It's bumping into my car every time I pull into the garage, and that's why I need to build a shed. And as it turns out, as the board very well knows, my backyard is also a front yard. And because it is a front yard, I cannot put an accessory in it without abiding by certain setbacks. And I'm here to ask for a relief for those setbacks. One, to, so the variances that I'm asking for is, one, to build in the front yard, which is my backyard, and, two, to get relief on the setbacks from the property line and on my neighbor's side.
Right.
Okay? And as the proposed plan that I shared with the board shows, the relief that I'm asking for is, I would like to have it be at 7.7 feet from the property on the front side and at 3.9 feet at the shortest side, 3.9, almost four feet at the shortest side, 6.2 feet at the further side from the neighbors. Okay? So in regards to variance one, really, my backyard, my quote-unquote "front yard" is my backyard. I don't really have a, you know, it's not a front yard in the back. I have some pictures here. I did print out some things for the board. If you'd like, I can leave them.
I'm sure, as long as you understand that once you give them to us, we keep them for the record.
That's okay. These are your copies.
Okay.
I only have four copies of each shed.
And we can share.
So as you can see on picture number one, this is on the North Street side, on the backside of my house. The entire property line is edged with a stone wall, and there's zero access into that side of the yard from anything. And really, and then in terms of the layout of my property, there is no, there's no front access to that from that side of the house. It's really only a backside access. Okay? So that's picture one, shows that wall, and then it's the, picture two also shows that wall. The wall is really not visible because, actually, I downloaded these pictures from the GIS portal online. And as you can see, these are in the summertime. And the wall is within, inside those trees. Okay? So that's picture one and two, that shows that really my backyard is, my front yard is really a backyard. In terms of variance two, as I said, I'm asking for relief at 7.7 feet from the front side and 3.9 at the shortest side to my neighbors, at 6.2 at the furthest distance from my neighbor. And that is visible, clearly visible, on the plot plan that I got certified by the surveyor, Jarvis. And the reason I'm asking for it to be there, because really it's the most logical place for me to put that shed in my backyard. On the opposite side of the, on the opposite side of the property, as you can see in picture four, I have some fruit trees back there that go about 20, 20, 25 feet into the property. So if I was to put a shed on that side, it would be smack in the middle of my yard. Okay? And then if I was to push the shed, if I was to keep it where I'm proposing to have it, but push it further away from my neighbor's property, I would have to go, again, further into my property because of this tree line that's on the North Street side, which goes about 10 to 15 feet into my property. So again, the shed would be, again, smack in the middle of my yard. So again, from my perspective, where I'm requesting to have the shed be placed is the most logical place to be had. On a second note, I also took a close-up in picture five, and you can see that when there is full foliage, that shed will not be visible at all to my neighbors. So I just wanted to point that out to the board. Okay? And then one more comment. On the backside of the shed, on the other side, on the side that's also adjacent to my neighbor's, 132 High Street, there would be no windows, no doors, no nothing to that shed. So the doors would be on the front side facing my house, and the windows would be on the, on that side.
It's in the yard.
In the yard. Just looking at my notes here, make sure I mentioned everything that I wanted to mention to you on variance one and variance two that I'm requesting. Okay? And then finally, my last comment to the board. I would like to point out that, I mean, since I've learned all of this, that my backyard is a front yard and all of that good stuff, did a little bit of driving around town, did a little bit of driving in my neighborhood, and really found that most sheds that I've seen, if not, if not all, about 95% of sheds are either on the edge of the yard or in the corner of a yard. I've never seen anybody put a shed in the middle of their yard. And then while I was doing that, I noticed a few sheds that seemed to be, at least the naked eye, not within setbacks. And I have a few pictures of those in, you know, the last three pictures of the, in my deck there that show that. So I tried to get, I tried to get plot plans and as-built plans from the building department to show exact dimensions, but unfortunately, none existed. So.
Okay.
So that's my request to the board. I hope you guys agree with what I'm requesting and grant me the variances.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? I'm going to start here to my right and work our way around.
Sure. So what's holding you as close to the property line as you are?
So.
What's making you choose those distances instead of at least from the neighbor's yard going the 10-yard, the 10-foot setback?
Right. So i-if you're looking at picture one.
Yeah.
If I, if I move any further, any further this way away from the property, the depth of that, the depth of that woods, tree is about 15 feet into my yard. So I basically hit that, and I have to basically move down and then move in into my yard. And again, I'm pushing into my yard, and I'll have basically that space to the right of that.
Is what you're saying is there's a little cutout in the trees there?
Yes.
That you're sticking this in?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you can see it right there. That spot right there is pretty much that 10 by 14 with the setbacks, and I basically try to push as much as I can.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't really tell too much in this angle or from an aerial angle.
It's okay. My brother would like to add another comment.
Yeah.
So, I mean, today is a perfect example. North Street has a major water runoff. I mean, it doesn't absorb much water. The table is extremely high, and the water just runs down the surface. We were trying to do this without interrupting as much of the existing condition, so we don't know, we didn't want any more water going into his basement. So we could definitely move it by doing some earthwork, taking some trees down, but we didn't want to excavate and, you know, disturb, because if we were to do that, more water would come in off of North Street into his property. The ground is a little high. That island, if you want to call it, right off of North Street kind of protects his property from any water coming off of North Street. And, you know, it basically just rides down the pavement down North Street, makes it into, you know, to the next catch basin. But if we were to, you know, to remove that, we'd kind of, because the deck needs to sit on a flat surface, and that area right there, you know, kind of makes it the best location without interrupting anything. And to be honest with you, by us having to move it, it actually worked out a little better because now it's a much flatter spot from where we originally were planning on putting it. So that, I hope that answers your question.
It does. I mean, I'm still not entirely comfortable with it being as close as it is, given it's a new construction piece. And unfortunately, in my opinion, I don't think a couple of trees makes much of a difference. Unfortunately, I'm not privy to what the yard looks like when it rains. Unfortunately, there's a lot of rain today, and just about everywhere is flooded with the amount of rain that we got. I'm not sure how much six feet of difference makes. Again, I can only look at the pictures that are provided here, and I can't really get a good assessment on what it looks like from.
If you look at, I mean.
So the trees are not just, also, to point out, the trees are not, you know, there is about a two-foot step up, you know, mound of dirt there. So it's not just cutting the tree down.
Trying to find a picture that tells it, you know, that gives it a better.
I wonder if maybe I could ask you a clarifying question along the lines of what Kevin, I think, is driving at. You know, if you just look at the, like, aerial, you know, the satellite photo on Google Maps or whatever.
Right.
There's this big wide-open strip of grass that looks like it would be more than wide enough to accommodate the shed, and then you see the tree cover in the back. If you were to even just put it in the back corner there where the trees stop, it looks like you'd be able to, I guess what we're getting at is.
Right. So on that side, there are fruit trees, and I don't know if they're visible to the Google Maps.
I think what I'm saying, though, is that, you know, not being, not, not living in your yard, like, looking at just the materials in front of us.
Right.
It's not obvious why you'd even have to cut down trees to comply with the setbacks. I guess, I don't know if that's what you're sort of driving at.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm kind of driving.
Talking about the other side?
No. He's talking up against the Butters property at 132.
Right, the western.
Where the shed, the side the shed is on now.
Okay.
So further down.
So for you to move it, further down this way?
Yeah.
Towards the house?
Basically towards the house.
Yeah. I mean, that's what, that's what I don't want to do, put a shed right smack in the middle of my yard.
I know. Nobody wants a shed in the middle of their yard.
I mean, like I said, I've driven around a good section of the entire neighborhood. I've not seen one.
I can't speak to them. I don't think anybody on the board can speak to them because I don't know if they've come before us or not.
Yeah.
But what I'm looking at here in front of us, because this is what is before us, I don't, I, I just don't see why it couldn't be a little bit further into the yard, less of, it doesn't, you then would get relief on the setback from North Street, but at least you'd comply with the setbacks with your neighbors.
Understood. But if, honestly, I'm not the neighbor.
So mathematically, if you were to do it mathematically, you see, at the furthest point, you have 6.2. To clear the 10 feet, you'd have to move up. The deck, the porch, the shed is 14 feet deep, so you'd have to move it. Right now, we're 7.7 feet from the back, so you'd have to move it another 14 feet, which keeps you at 6.2. Let's say you move it another 10 feet, so you get 10 feet. So now you're 14, 10 plus 7.7. I'm 24, 32, 31 feet away from, I'm 31 feet into my property, you know? And the lot size is.
Or rotate the shed, sorry, I'll let you, I'll let you finish.
The lot size is, I mean, so you're putting it right in the middle of the yard. That's what we're trying not to do, you know?
And I just would like to add one comment.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I am not the neighbor, but if I was the neighbor, I wouldn't want it where you're asking to put it, because then it's, it's basically right in his face. He's got a deck on that side. They have a deck, the folks, I haven't met the new neighbor yet, but they have a deck right there. It's basically, if they're sitting in their deck, they're basically overlooking onto, they would be overlooking onto the shed. Again, I'm just telling you, for me, it's completely invisible back there. That's why I'm asking for the variance.
Okay. And all I'm saying is I don't think it would take much. You rotate it five degrees clockwise, move it out four feet, and to me, you're done. In my opinion. I don't know how the other board members feel. I'll turn it over to them. I've been taking enough time.
Sure. David?
So there's, there's two variances you're looking for. The one about your backyard being a front yard, I have no, I have no challenge to you on that one. I think it's an appropriate side of the house to put a shed on. I can see why my fellow board members would, would take exception to the 3.9 and the 7.7 as that is on the close side. I don't, I think they've covered anything I could ask you, so I'm just going to move on.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Tim?
Michelle, you've, I mean, you guys have outlined it pretty well. I understand what you're asking for and why. You know, it does make sense, the spot on your property that you're saying it should go there. I get that. But in terms of, you know, the criteria that you need to meet for the, for us to approve it, the first one, the hardship, is did the water run on your property today from North Street?
I, the water runs on my property all the time.
From North Street?
Yes. So let me give you an example. I, in the window wells where I, where my, that are in the backside of that yard, I was continuously getting, I was always having to pump, you know, floor pumps and suck water out and throw them, until about three weeks ago, I had, I installed drains to get water out of there. Continuously, whenever it rained, I have to suck water out of my window wells.
Yeah.
I had to do that.
So are you saying that's your hardship?
That's at least one of them. The other, the other is the actual, you know, not locating a shed, the 10 by 14 shed smack in the middle of my yard. As you can see from the pictures, I don't have a patio in my backyard. One day, I would like to put, one day, I'd like to put that. I don't want to be sitting in my, you know, close to the shed when I'm sitting in my patio.
So the, certainly concerning if water's running from North Street onto your property. To me, that could be, that's correctable with the, you know, calling it DPW or something, because I don't think they'd be happy about that either. But in terms of meeting the other requirements to grant the variance, it's really, Michelle, I think, the distance from North Street. So with your front yard, if it's a 30-foot, and I understand the two fronts, it's kind of a, you know, the situation is what it is, but with 30 feet from North Street and asking for, you know, 7.7, it appears that that would be a substantial derogation to the nature and intent of the Bible.
If I understand you correctly, you even have an issue with variance one that I'm requesting being away. Variance one is being, being, well, no, variance one is being in a backyard. Variance two encompasses with setbacks.
Well, not the backyard. It would be the distance from North Street, Michelle.
Right, right. Understood. I have 30 feet away from.
From 30 to go to seven is substantial.
Right. So I actually provided you picture, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tim.
Tim.
Oh, I have.
I provided you pictures of properties that have frontage on two streets, and there is no way these folks are within those setbacks.
Michelle, I totally understand, but those aren't.
If we have to make an exception for some reason.
Those aren't, you know, that's not what's being presented now.
Right. So, okay, I mean, my issue is putting, you know, if I had to be 30 feet away from the, from the North Street side of the property line, I'm smack in the middle of my yard, which just does not make sense. I mean, I'm, please, don't take this the wrong way. I'm not being, you know, but would you put a shed in your yard, smack in the middle of your yard?
No, not taking it the wrong way at all, Michelle.
Yes, I'm just, you know, just put yourself in my shoes.
Mr. Byrne?
Sir, as my colleague just questioned you, there are, you have to have, in order to get a variance, the Law &amp; Order of Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court many, many times is that variances should be seldomly granted unless there are these requirements or a requirement, shape of your lot, topography of your lot, soil conditions in the property itself. What you've suggested is water comes onto your property from a public way. Have you, have you, you have, have you ever had any contact with the Highway Department or the Public Works Department about this issue that you say is existing for a long period of time?
No, sir, I have not, because what I've done is fixed it myself.
All right, fine. All right. Okay. Is there anything else that, I'm looking at the shape of your lot, four sides.
Right.
I don't understand two fronts, but that doesn't make any difference. Shape, the topography of your land. Last November, when you were here, you probably heard one of the, one of the people saying, you know, there's granite in the middle.
I did.
Lot that goes down to China, and that's topography. Soil conditions, is there something in there that's, you want to put in a pool, and it's all sandy over here and here, but it's a perfect spot here? And that's soil conditions? Is there anything more you can tell me, board, as to how, when variances are supposed to be infrequently given? And I'm not hearing anything from what you've said so far. And by the way, I watched the November 27th meeting from start to finish twice. Okay? So I heard everything that was, that was said at the last meeting. Is there anything else that relates to shape, topography, soil conditions?
Well, in terms of shape, I mean, here you have a plot plan in front of you. You don't see, you don't see any of the landscaping that I was mentioning or anything of the sort. It's simply basing on the, on the plot plan, on this side.
What's the shape of?
On this side.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Byrne. On this side, as I mentioned, there's about 20 feet this way into, into the yard, 20, 25 feet of, you know, maybe 12 fruit trees. On this side, there's about 10 to 15, maybe even more, 20 feet of, of just crazy trees that were there from the time.
Of what?
Of regular trees that were there, you know, oak-type trees, you know, that were there from the time that the house was built. So I would have to move away from those, move away from those, and then put the shed here somewhere. So that's from a shape perspective. From a topography, I did not, I did not do any, you know, and then I also, my brother told you about the water issue. That's, that's all I can mention.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
So I don't want to belabor it too much. I think from my standpoint, having two front yards actually means that you can be closer to your rear line than somebody who has an ordinary backyard that requires a 40-foot setback. It appears to me to be a large, flat, mostly empty lot. As Mr. Byrne articulated, there's nothing particularly irregular about the shape. It appears to be flat, so we don't have much in the way of topography. We haven't heard anything about soil conditions. And the other thing is that any of those things have to be unique to your lot as opposed to the lots in the area, and it doesn't sound like any of the things that you're raising in terms of potential hardships are unique. Everybody's got trees in their yard, and, you know, water runs onto lots when it rains hard and all these sorts of things.
Understood.
So I think, I don't have any problem at all with the first variance. I think it, what you say makes perfect sense. If you have two front yards, what are you supposed to do? And it looks like it makes sense to have the shed in what would normally be the backyard. But to grant a variance, we need to have one of those things present by law, and I don't, I don't see them. I mean, I have an open mind. I'm interested to hear what the public has to say and what my fellow board members have to say, but from where I am now, I don't totally see the rationale.
Understood. Is the issue of the board with closeness to the, to the neighbor or with the closeness to the street? I would like to know that, because if I have to spend more money and relocate this, I would like to know how, you know, where, you know, where should I come back to you guys with?
Well, I think the, at least from my standpoint, if you were to locate it within the regular building envelope, you wouldn't have to come back to us at all, and that's maybe the best way to save money. For me, I think the side yard setback being only 10 feet and there being really nothing in the way that we can sort of see over there, that seems like an easy win. Move it four feet in, I understand what your brother's saying, but at the same time, four feet on a lot the size isn't necessarily going to blow up the whole, you know, picture. And then from the rear, I think, is, I think, Mr. Byrne mentioned, as Tim mentioned also, if you're talking about a 30-foot setback, seven feet, so that's a lot of relief. That's more than 20 feet of relief. If you came back a little bit further, maybe it would look different. And I, you know, as Kevin said, I can't speak to the pictures you have other homes here. Maybe they got a variance. Maybe they're out of compliance. I don't know, and there's no way for us to know here, sitting here right now.
Understood.
But I think there's, it appears to me that there may be alternatives that would be more palatable, at least to me, and it sounds like maybe to my fellow board members. I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to come up, identify yourself by your name and your address, if you'd like to be heard. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I guess same thing, go around, and let's talk about our thoughts.
I mean, if the closest point of the shed was 10 feet off the neighbor's yard, this, I know that 7.7 is a lot of relief from that 30, but given the grove of trees there, that doesn't bother me as much. Again, it also is a backyard. How are you supposed to treat something that we call a front yard, a front yard, when it's really a backyard to this house? So for me, if that back corner where it's, that 7.7 dimension comes off of is 10 feet off the property of the neighbors, for me, it's fine.
Okay. David?
As I said before, the first variance, I don't have any challenge with. As for the second one, I don't, if we, irrespective of the zone and the definition of the zone, I don't have a problem with where the shed is located. But as Mr. Byrne has, has indicated, you know, we're obligated by law to adhere to the zoning bylaws, which have set out the setbacks and the distances. So as Kevin said, the 7.7 on the back, I have less of a problem with. It is a large relief that you're requesting. it is a large relief that you're requesting, I, I would take more, more, more respect or note to the side yard setback, if that was the ten feet, and, and if, you know, I, I like it in that corner, but I have to take respect to the zone and how the zone, the bylaw is written, and, you know, I have, I have to make a decision based off of the law, unfortunately.
Understood.
Tim?
Michelle, Andre, everything you guys have said makes sense, except that the criteria for this, it doesn't, doesn't really appear that there's a true hardship, so the literal enforcement of that wouldn't apply, and then the, the, really the, the sticking point really is that distance from North Street is just too substantial to go, you know, that close to North Street. I have no problem with the side yard and/or the, you know, the, that first variance on the, not in a front yard with this type of structure, so it's really just the, the, the two things, the hardship and, or the lack thereof, and the distance to North Street, it's too close.
What would be considered not...
Sorry, the, the hearing's closed, so now it's just board members. Mr. Byrne?
As I discussed, as I suggested to the applicant here, the standards for variances are very strong, okay? Case law is very, very strong, okay? Because it's more convenient for you, because it's, whatever the things you have told us, that's not what the law says, and, okay, this is my position.
And I, I guess I would just, you know, another way of thinking about it is, if we don't find that one of those things are present, it's not within our power to grant that relief, and I guess that's sort of where I'm coming out. I do have a question, though, Mr. McGoldrick, do, we don't have the ability to say, if you put it here, we would approve it, it would have to be a new application, is that right?
Yeah, it would be a new application, you know, we may want to, you know, we could consider, you know, I do think that in this case, if it's a new location of the shed, that would allow reapplication, and, and that request for variance relief, obviously the new location deferred to the board, but I think that that would be substantially different in nature than what's proposed currently.
Okay.
But I'll defer to the board, if they feel that that wouldn't be substantially different, the applicant may want to request a withdrawal without prejudice, which would allow, allow them to reapply within that two-year window.
Right.
That may just be safer, but...
Is it okay if I ask, what does that mean?
So, typically, if a, if a board moves to deny an application, you're precluded from reapplying for the same relief within the next two years, essentially a cooldown period, but if the application is found by the board to be substantially different in some way, they can hear it within that two-year window, but it's, it's just meant to have an end, that if, if there's, you know, repetitive requests for the same relief, the board has two years to...
So, I, I would say if, if a new location were proposed, I would consider that to be a different application, I don't know if, if that's the sense that everyone else has, but that's helpful, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess I would say, for me, I'm, I'm somewhat less concerned about the rear setback, though it is a substantial request for relief, just where it's a road and it's not someone else's yard, for example, but I think if it came closer to the house, I would be more inclined to support it, and then the same thing with the side yard setback, if it just, you know, if it could comply with the ten feet, we're so close anyway to that, I would be inclined to support it, but in its current form, I don't think I would support the variance if we were to take a vote, so. Unless there are any other comments from the board, can I get a motion?
All right. I propose a motion to deny the two variances to Section Seven, Table Two, to construct a shed in the front yard along North Street at one thirty High Street in the resident B one district.
Can I make a, this is sort of a point of order? It sounds like most of us would be inclined to grant the first variance. If we were to deny it now, the two-year window would apply for reapplying for that same variance again?
Yeah, so what I would suggest, as a motion, as an amendment, I was going to mention this in discussion portion.
Sure.
What I, what I would suggest, it seems the board is in consensus in terms of the first variance for the rear yard setback, so they can vote to approve as the variance of the rear yard being the front yard, and then deny, if they feel so, the setbacks, that variance request, so that way they would be able to...
Reapply for the...
Reapply simply for the setbacks if needed.
Yeah, so if, if we, if we have consensus that we're okay with the, the front yard, rear yard piece, it might make sense to vote to approve that, and then if we were to deny the other piece, deny the other piece.
No, no.
No? Okay.
Consensus, no.
No, okay.
That would make sense to me, if, basically, we're saying on the, on variance one, where, where it's not allowed in a front yard.
Right.
Since the situation is what it is, I'd be okay, you know, approving the, or...
Sort of splitting the baby, so to speak, yeah.
And then it's the, then it's the setbacks, which is the issue.
Right. Okay. So, can I get a motion, I guess, again?
Okay, so we'll do two motions here. So then, I propose a motion to approve the first variance to Section Seven, Table Two, to construct a shed in the front yard along North Street at one thirty Highland Street, residence B one district, to allow a shed in the front yard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, so that's approved.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have another motion?
And then our second motion, to deny the second variance to the Section Seven, Table Two, to construct a shed in the front yard along North Street and one thirty High Street in the resident B one district, as relates to setbacks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, that motion is denied, or the motion carries, the application is denied, as to the second variance.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, is that with prejudice or without prejudice? So, can he apply? Can he reapply?
I would consider, based on the discussion we had, I would consider that you could reapply, but that's without prejudice. Thank you.
That, that, that will result in Louise never calling me again.
No, it won't.
Everybody's entitled to their opinions, and they're all respected here.
So, how about we need just another one? Okay. Because I, we bifurcated it, so. Perfect.
All right, moving right on to our next six-thirty hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Matthew Murva of one oh three Holman Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, on one five four five, for two variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section Seven, C, Table Three, to construct a fireplace in pergola in the front yard, forty-two point eight feet from the front yard setback, where these accessory structures are not allowed upon property located at one oh three Holman Street in the residence B one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate seventeen, plot zero four five zero zero zero. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Matt Murva, one oh three Holman Street, Shrewsbury.
Good evening, Matt, let us know what you'd like to do.
Great, would it be possible to put the plan up on the screen that was part of the application? And while, while that's coming up, I can just give you a brief rundown of, of where we're at. We were before the Conservation Commission this past spring for a project that included a, a pool, a garage addition, and some improvements to the, the yard. We, we were approved and received order of conditions and proceeded with pool construction and with the garage construction. Some of the other components that were on the plan included the fireplace and pergola that were in question, but no specific building permit was being applied for at the time for those structures. As the garage was being constructed this past late summer, early fall, one of the inspectors was out reviewing the garage location and noticed that the fireplace that, that was proposed was now being installed, and it's, in fact, within the front yard of our home. It's not within the setback, but it, it technically sits in the front yard, from my understanding, because it sits forward of the frontmost face of the garage, so if I could point it out on the screen, this is the garage addition here, this is Holman Street here, and then this is the, the fireplace location and the pergola location. So, as I understand it, because these, these components sit forward of this line of the house, they're technically in our front yard, so we are, are seeking a variance to allow for these structures to be in this location. If you'll scroll up on the plan a bit, you can see that the actual, the private drive here that's off of Holman Street is actually the direction that our house faces, so the front door is here, the under door is here, this is really the, the forward-facing facade of the house, and this is the garage side of the house, which actually faces Holman Street. So, this really doesn't function as our front yard, it functions essentially as our side and rear yard, and so for that reason, we, we really sort of have two front yards making our, our lot shape, the hardship here with respect to the relief that we're seeking. So, that's essentially what we're, we're asking tonight, is to be allowed to build that structure within the front yard, still outside of the, the setbacks required, and I can, I can stop there and, and take questions, but that's about the size of it.
Thank you. Mr. McGoldrick, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think the applicant really stated it very well, the main, I think crux of the issue here is that you have Holman Street, which is the street that the lot fronts on and creates the frontage, this property, as, as the applicant noted, the access and the house direction that it faces is technically the side yard, as that is on a private way and not a public right-of-way, and so because of that, that's the request that, you know, that is functionally what could be considered his rear yard, but in this case, again, is, is towards the front yard, and I think he noted very adequately of that front yard is inclusive of the, the front of the existing structure and that line, so I think those are the main considerations here.
Thank you. All right, let's work through the board, see if we have any questions, comments, Peter?
I would just, I think, pursuant to our conversation about variances earlier and the criteria, another one that the statute mentions is the, is existing structures. The orientation of the house here suggests to me that this, it would be a hardship to consider this to be something other than your side yard, just because of the way the house was, is, exists on the lot, so I don't have a problem, I don't think, with granting the ability to have that accessory structure in the front, and we received a number of letters in the record also from neighbors who support this as well, so on that basis, I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you. Anne?
I agree, I think it's an oddly shaped lot, and I don't see where else you could put it, so I have no problem with it, I think it looks nice.
I don't have anything further to add, I'm in line with my colleagues.
David?
I agree with everything that's already been said, and I think that incorporating it into a landscape and fence design as you've presented keeps it in the theme of the neighborhood, and, yeah, that's all I have.
I, I would just add, thank you so much for the concise plans, it really helps us to understand the scope of your project, and I would absolutely say that my interpretation is that the shape of the lot is really the hardship here, so I would be inclined to be in favor, and it is helpful to have commentary from your neighbors as well, so...
Great.
Without any more comment, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. I'd like to call a vote. Motion?
I move to approve two variances under Section Seven, C, Table Three, to construct a fireplace in pergola in the front yard, forty-two and eight tenths feet from the front yard setback, where these accessory structures are not allowed, at one hundred three Holman Street in the residence B one district.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. All right, next up. All right, this is to hear the appeal of Michael Connors, six twenty-one Main Street, new remodel works, Shrewsbury, Mass, on one five four five, for two variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section Seven, B, Table Two, to allow for an additional, addition to a pre-existing non-conforming building to be constructed, twenty-nine point two feet from the rear yard setback, where fifty feet is required, and an easterly side yard setback of thirty-two feet, where fifty feet is required. In addition, a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section Four B, for the westerly side yard setback of twenty-eight point five feet, where a fifty-foot is required upon property located at seven seventy-nine Hartford Turnpike in the limited industrial zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-three, plot zero two five zero zero zero. Welcome, and if you could identify yourself, please.
My name's Michael Connors, I'm the general manager of Emily's Interiors, located at seven seventy-nine Hartford Turnpike.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the owner-president of Emily's Interiors, and I'm also the property owner that's owned by Emily Realty LLC.
You could let us know what you're planning on doing, please.
Sure, so, Mr. McGoldrick, I just want to make sure, was this the latest update that I did this morning? Okay, I brought hard copies as well, if anybody would like them, and then I also have...
Do you have enough hard copies for all the board members?
I have eight total.
Anybody think that would be helpful?
I'm happy with a digital copy.
Okay, would anybody like a hard copy?
Okay, we're good, thank you.
And I also brought some renderings that show what the overall design intent is, if anybody would like to see those as well.
I think we have those too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this is an existing non-conforming lot, it's a fairly odd-shaped lot, and what we're trying to do is, right now, we lease warehouse space in North Borough, and we're trying to consolidate all of our operations and increase the size of our showroom, we feel this is going to bring a lot of commerce and business to Shrewsbury. The building is non-conforming, so it's already within the both-side setbacks and the rear setback, excuse me, both-side setbacks. We've gone for and were granted conservation approval at last month's conservation meeting, which was the first step in this process, now we're before you seeking zoning relief. We feel like our hardship is both the orientation, size of the lot, and the topography on the plant west side, we've already spoken to the neighbors over there, and they're open to the idea of a retaining wall to kind of increase the flat space, which is what we're proposing in this plan. We've, you know, up and down the street, we've seen, we see a lot of similar, we, we don't feel like what we're proposing would stick out like a sore thumb, there's a lot of very similar architecture, similar buildings in place in this area, so, I know it's kind of short and sweet, but that's, that's what we're proposing, and that's kind of the, the backup that we have for it, and I'd love to hear the board's comments.
Thank you. Mr. McGoldrick, any further comments?
Yeah, I think, so we've been working very diligently with the applicant, you know, coming up with the, the revised plan before you tonight, you know, I think we're ninety-nine point nine percent there, they've answered most of the questions, you know, that were in the materials provided to you from the building inspector. The one last one, we've been working to get comment from the fire department in terms of the access towards the rear of the structure for this, and, and I do note that this is a project that would be a subject to administrative site plan review, so that's just a, you know, essentially a staff review for this structure, so I do think we're ninety-nine percent there, most of our kind of staff questions have been answered, but it's, it's primarily that rear access, so I do note from the plans that were provided today, they're showing the twenty-eight point five feet from, I can show here, from the addition to the retaining wall, we can somewhat surmise from the, the parking stall location of the eight-foot standard there, that it's about twenty feet of that drive width, but again, just with the retaining wall dimension and... But again, just with the retaining wall dimension and just how close that is to our standards, we just want to make sure that the fire department access would be able to get to the rear of that structure with that drive aisle. So, you know, our recommendation would be if the board would, at their discretion, consider continuing this potentially to the next meeting. We could then, in that interim time, get the administrative site plan addressed, which would answer probably that that final question with the fire department. And that would allow them to incorporate the revised plan into their decision. But obviously happy to discuss the application further with the applicant or with the board tonight.
Thank you. Peter?
I think for this one, what's persuasive to me is that the shape of the lot is odd and unusual for the area, and that if you look, and this is actually very helpful on the plot plan that you've submitted, the the building envelope is small and strange. And so you kind of don't have a choice but to go outside the building envelope here to develop it. And so in terms of the basic criteria for variance, that all works for me. I do have concerns, as Mr. McColdrick raised, about the fire access piece, and so I'd be inclined to continue it to the next hearing, just to make sure that's nailed down. But I'm interested in what others have to say.
Anne?
I agree with Peter. I think it's an oddly shaped lot, oddly shaped building. But and I'd like to hear what the fire department has to say. So I would agree to a continuance probably.
Okay. Kevin?
Could we condition approval instead of having them?
Can I ask Chris the same thing?
Instead of having the applicant have to come back in a month?
So you can't specifically condition approval on another authority's essential approval of plans?
Right.
You you could, if you feel that the administrative site plan is going to address that sufficiently, you could rely on that and simply approve it as is. But the only issue there, and I'd certainly be willing to talk with the applicant in terms of their, if that's any issue for them, but the plans, you know, if if the building needs to be adjusted, they'd essentially have to amend the plans further. So that's that's the only issue is that rather than having them come back then, it could kick them out even an additional month, rather than just incorporating the plans from the administrative site plan review.
Okay. I was just curious. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
David?
I have nothing to add.
May I just, I apologize. May I just ask, just if you could explain the process of that administrative site plan review?
Yeah, so administrative site plan review, the process for that is it's it's just the submission, which, you know, we can probably put together from the materials here. But what it is, is we review it with staff departments. It does go to the planning board for comment, but just simply a comment on it. The actual approving authority is the building inspector, and we just review that with staff, give the planning board the chance to comment.
So that's different than the application and approval process? So we're already?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
So I think on its merits, the the shape and the topography, it sounds like you have some topography issues in the back with the retaining wall in play. So I would be inclined to be in favor, but to the point that's been raised, I think to be safe, as much as I would guess, if you're ready to go, it looks like you've spent a lot of time on the plans, and they look like great plans. I I think in order to be safe, I'd I would be more comfortable with the continuation of the hearing until next month, so that we can get everything hammered out, and you could be on your way.
Sure. May I ask just a quick hypothetical?
Sure.
If the fire department review comes back and they do want us to make changes to, you know, increase that alleyway, would we be able to shift the wall, make changes, given this continuance, or would that be a complete reapplication?
Yeah, so that's part of my recommendation. So kind of logistically, the two paths forward. You know, the the board could vote tonight, and then depending upon the outcome of that administrative site plan, if if the fire department says, no, that's fine, then you're good to go from that point forward. However, if they do want an adjustment, if the board has voted, you need to go through the process here again to restart it. If if we keep the hearing open, then in January, we can simply.
Sure.
Make that adjustment if needed. And then, and so that's the only thing, is by by closing the hearing tonight, you may end up.
No, totally.
Losing another month.
I appreciate the board's explanation of that. So yes, we'd like to formally request a continuance.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue the hearing, please?
What's the date of the next one? Twenty-nine? I move to continue this hearing to six thirty PM on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. We'll see you in January.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
All right. All right. Our next six thirty hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Pulte Homes of New England LLC, nineteen hundred West Park Drive, Suite one eighty, Westboro, Mass. oh one five eight one, for a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of chapter forty B, section twenty-two twenty-three of the Massachusetts General Law, to permit the construction of a three-hundred unit multifamily residential development upon property located at thirty-three through sixty-nine Green Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessors tax plate forty-three, plot zero zero seven zero zero zero. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for your time tonight. I'll open. My name is Mark Mastriani. I'm a representative of Pulte Homes of New England, and we are the proposed builder and applicant of the proposed residential application that's before your board that's opening tonight. So just as an introduction to Pulte Homes of New England. Could you go to the second slide, please? Thank you. We're one of twenty-six local divisions throughout the United States of Pulte Group. Pulte Group is a large nationally public home builder, started in nineteen fifty, and currently is headquartered out of Atlanta, Georgia. The only reason I mention Pulte Group is just that it it provides Pulte Homes of New England financial strength and capability. It provides us internal funding so that we can acquire, build, and develop and complete projects in this area without any third-party financing, which is which is really important for us, and and has allowed us to be very successful for a a great number of years. So with that said, Pulte Homes of New England is what I really wanted to introduce to you. That's, our office is located in Westboro, so it's about twenty minutes down Route nine, just off of, well, it used to be Flanders Road. We just moved. We're in the, we're we're right behind the Piccadilly, if you know where that is, on Route nine, at the four ninety-five intersection. So we've we've been building in eastern Massachusetts out of our our Massachusetts-New England office for thirty years, since nineteen ninety-four. We've built and sold almost eight thousand homes, you know, here in eastern Mass. over those over those number of years. And we're really proud of the reputation that Pulte Homes of New New England has in this area, Massachusetts, eastern Massachusetts is a really small community. And, you know, we we're really proud of the reputation that we've built in all the neighboring communities in this area. We build only for-sale homeownership communities, so we're not a rental company. We we don't do rental projects. And we have a very experienced local team of our employees out of New England office. We're pretty much born and bred here. I live in North Ridge down the street. My my partner here, Essek, lives in Grafton, has this whole life. So we're a local, although we're a national home builder, we're really, we're very local. We're based out of Westboro. We've been here for for a long time. Next slide, please. So this is just a slide I wanted to show of our current active communities that we're building out of the Westboro office. So we have ten active residential communities currently. And and I I show this list of the ten active communities because, again, we're proud of our reputation, and it's a small community here in this area. And I would encourage, if you if you felt so, to to contact any of your counterparts or any of the city or town officials at any one of these communities that we're building in, and ask about, you know, Pulte Homes of New England. Ask about how we worked with the cities and towns. You know, ask about the quality of our homes and our communities that that we're building. I think you'd get real very positive feedback from all of them, and we're really proud of that reputation. Two communities I want to key on is Upton Ridge. That's a hundred and thirty-nine townhomes right down the street in Upton. We're just completing that community basically this year. And also Del Webb Chauncey Lake, right on Lyman Street in Westboro, very close to here. That's a seven-hundred unit community. And that actually has garden-style mid-rise buildings, similar to the buildings that we're proposing here in in Shrewsbury. Again, very close communities. If you had a chance, or if you desired, you could drive through and, again, see the the presentation of the communities, the quality of the homes, of what of what we're proposing to bring here to the town of Shrewsbury. I've been at Pulte Homes for twenty years, and I'm very proud of the communities that we've that we've completed. We have not had a chance to work with the town of Shrewsbury previously, so we're very excited for this opportunity to do so. And really thank you for your time tonight and for this process that we're we're about to begin together. With that said, I'll I'll turn it over to Essek. So he'll complete the introductions and and has a presentation to provide you more information about the project that we're proposing here in Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, the board. Again, Essek Petry with Pulte Homes. Excuse me. I work in the land planning and entitlement group with Mark. And before we get too far into the project, I just wanted to introduce our other partners that we brought on to really ensure a successful project working with you. Civil Design Group and Matt Leidner, who's joining us here tonight. They are our site design and civil general engineering firm. And Matt's going to walk through some of the more detailed engineering aspects of the project as part of this presentation tonight. MDM Transportation, excuse me, is handling the traffic impact analysis portion of the project. And Bob Micho from MDM will be joining us to detail some of the traffic analysis at a future meeting. SWCA has been handling all of our natural resource identification and impact analysis, including habitat and wetland delineation. We've been working with ALIA and the Conservation Commission. Over the past six months, we recently was received our ORAD for wetland delineation, and we are in the process of putting together our NOI application packet. Coffin Environmental Services, they specialize in wastewater and utility infrastructure engineering. They've been working with Jeff and Dan in the DPW, talking about sewer and water connectivity and capacity at the site. They will be joining us at another future meeting as well to talk about the details about utility infrastructure for the project. And then finally, Smolak and Vaughn, and Stephanie Kieber in particular, who's joined us here tonight, will be handling our legal services. I just want to highlight some of the project outreach and communication that we have conducted prior to tonight's meeting. While this is the first time presenting to this board, we've been very busy coordinating with various town departments and communicating with the neighbors. We originally met with the select board in February, and we received some great feedback on project details. We adjusted our concept based on that feedback, presented the updated information to the community development leadership team, as well as meeting separately with various town departments, including Public Safety, DPW, as well as Selco as well. We took additional feedback from those meetings. We then continued to update the project, presented that next version to select board in September. We also hosted a community meeting at the senior center this past November. We sent out over two hundred invitations to, we got addresses from the assessors, sent two hundred invitations. We had over twenty neighbors attend, and we spent approximately two hours answering questions and getting feedback from the neighbors at at that meeting. And then additionally, as noted, we have been meeting with CONCOM throughout this process as well. Now on to the project itself. Just to familiarize and give a little bit of context, the site is located in the southeastern corner of Shrewsbury, based near the Grafton and Westboro lines, between South Street and Green Street. And there is a signalized intersection at Route twenty and Green Street, and an unsignalized intersection at Route twenty and South Street, which also does have a right-turn restriction recently applied. Just getting a little bit closer in, as you can see, South South Street serves as the northern border of the project, and Green Street is the southern border. Just a couple of the basics before Matt really gets into the details. The total acreage of the project, thirty-six acres, includes six four-story buildings with fifty units each and a garage under. So there'll be a total of three hundred units, with twenty-five percent of those being affordable, so a total of seventy-five affordable units as part of the project. And then, as I mentioned, we have been working with various town departments and made some adjustments to our original plan. One of the primary changes to our original concept is the introduction of a new parcel crossing the property and connecting South Street and Green Street. Pulte intends to deed this parcel to the town, and although not part of this project, the current expectation is for the town to plan a connection between those two roadways. Additionally, as a direct result of coordination with with the town, we have incorporated an amenity package into the development, including a clubhouse, pickleball courts, and various grill and patio areas. And then finally, based on our coordination with emergency services and police and fire, we incorporated, excuse me, incorporated an emergency-only access drive at the southern end of the project. And so with that, I will turn it over to Matt to go into some more of the details.
Great. Good evening, board members. Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group. I'm a civil engineer for the project. Good evening, members of the public as well. So I'll walk you through sort of the engineering overview of the of the project. Please feel free to stop me if you'd like me to repeat anything, clarify anything along the way. Happy to take questions at the appropriate time as well. So I figured it was best to start off with the existing additions plan. So this is the site survey that was part of the the package that was submitted. Just to note, this this plan is slightly rotated from the previous plan, just to be able to zoom in a little bit more on the screen. So north is, you can see north arrow in the top right corner. North is up and to the left on this plan. So just to get everyone's bearings, Hartford Turnpike's on the left side of the plan, Green Street's on the bottom, and South Street is on the top of this plan. And so this plan shows topography, the site slopes, basically the perimeter sites site slopes toward the middle of the site. There's a large wetland complex running from west to east through the through the middle of the site, and then the extension of that wetland that that extends to the south, but actually flows to the north and joins that main wetland complex that flows to the east. And so it's really the topography and the wetlands that sort of set the development envelope for this project. I will mention that the wetlands, we've worked with the Conservation Commission this year. The wetlands were delineated earlier this year in spring, early summer, I think it was. I think it was spring. And then we worked with the commission, and they've issued last month an order of resource area delineation for all the wetlands on the project side of the site, meaning that those wetlands are now formalized, and those are what are shown on on this plan before you tonight and what's been submitted. Next slide, please. So this is the overall layout plan from the submitted plan set. The site or the project consists of three hundred residential units. Those units are contained in six fifty-unit buildings. Each building is four stories of residential living over parking. The units will be comprised of one, two, and three-bedroom units, with the vast majority of them being one- and two-bedroom units. As was mentioned earlier, this is a homeownership project, condominium-style development. This is not a rental project. Twenty-five percent of the units will be designated as affordable units, in this case, seventy-five units, and those will be dispersed throughout the site. The submission to the ZBA did include an architectural package with preliminary rendering, elevations, and floor plan for the buildings. And when I conclude the engineering part of the presentation, Essek will give an overview of the architecture. Project amenities, and some of these, I apologize if I'm Project amenities, and some of these, I apologize if I'm repetitive, may have been mentioned, but the project includes amenity areas, both indoor and outdoor, including gathering areas, social spaces. First and foremost is there's a proposed clubhouse, approximately 2,400 square foot clubhouse on the plan. That clubhouse will have attached to it a patio area with an outdoor seating area and grilling station. There are also three other outdoor patio areas, gathering areas with grills that are dispersed throughout the project, so that there is one proximate and convenient to each cluster of buildings. Also proposed are two pickleball courts, which are across from the clubhouse. Each building will have exterior bike racks, including the clubhouse, so each residential building in the clubhouse will have outdoor bike racks, and then interior to each of the residential buildings will be weather-protected, secure storage for bikes as well. Access from the project, so same orientation as existing conditions survey, Green Street is along the bottom of this plan, so access to the project will be provided, is proposed to be provided via two full-access driveways from Green Street. One will serve buildings one through five, which are on the right-hand side of the page. A second full-access driveway is proposed to serve Building Six, which is the building closer to Hartford Turnpike on the left side of the page. In addition, on the farthest right driveway you see on that plan is proposed to be a gated emergency access only. That was added to the plan in our preliminary discussions with the fire department to create a secondary means of access to that five-building cluster. Internal circulation for buildings one through five on the right will be a network of driveways and parking areas that wind their way through the site and provide access to each of the buildings in that area. And then on the left side will be a driveway and parking area to provide access to Building Six. All the driveways, parking areas, and infrastructure associated with the, internal to the project is proposed to be privately owned and maintained. Each of the buildings, each of the residential buildings, the six buildings, will contain 50 internal parking spaces. So I had mentioned each building is four stories of living over a parking garage. Those parking garages each have 50 spaces, and then we've dispersed the parking throughout, the exterior parking throughout the project such that each building has 40 surface parking, exterior surface parking spaces. So each building will have 90 parking spaces, a total of 540 parking spaces, which is a 1.8 parking ratio, meaning 1.8 spaces per proposed unit. Pulte has vast experience with these very same buildings in this area, and that is the ideal parking ratio to provide sufficient parking for the residents and also their guests. In addition, there are a handful of spaces above and beyond the 540 associated with the clubhouse, and then there's two recycling areas, one for each cluster of buildings, which have a handful of parking spaces as well for the residents. I want to just mention again, I know I've said it, but the subsurface parking beneath each of the buildings will account for more than half the parking proposed on the site, and it's significant because that is all parking that if it were external to the buildings would result in additional impervious area and just additional sprawl or extension of the limit of work to accommodate the parking. So having that amount of parking within the footprint of the building saves a tremendous amount of overall limit of work and impervious area. Also want to mention that there are EV chargers proposed in each parking lot, so for each building externally, and I believe there will be internally, so in the parking garages as well, there will be EV parking. So this project is set up for that as well, and does propose that. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of the proposed landscaping plan, which was submitted as part of the package. So there's proposed a robust landscaping program, and I wanted to just take a few highlights. So the, all the proposed plantings on the site are native cultivars of their species. They were selected specifically to be well-adapted to the climate in Massachusetts and specifically this area of Massachusetts, and all of the proposed plantings are also, were also selected to be drought-tolerant species. Next slide. So I just wanted to run briefly through utilities. Again, at the end, happy to answer any questions on any of this material. So the water is proposed, that will serve the project, is proposed to be fed off the municipal water main in Green Street, and that water main is proposed to be upsized in conjunction with this project and through coordination with DPW. So we've had meetings to date, and will continue to have meetings as we continue down this road with DPW to address water and sewer. So that's been, that upsizing of the water main in Green Street will be done in coordination with DPW. We're proposing an eight-inch water main to run throughout, internal to the project, throughout the project. Each of the buildings will be served by a domestic water service and then a fire service as well. As far as wastewater or sewer, the project is proposed to connect to the town's municipal sewer system. So starting sort of upstream, working down, within the project, each of the buildings will have a gravity sewer that will flow down to the lowest part of that particular section of the site and down to a pump station. For this project, we're proposing two pump stations. There's two low parts of the site, so there'll be two pump stations. The wastewater will flow gravity to those pump stations, and then the wastewater will be pumped via a force main, which is just a sewer main that's being pumped as opposed to gravity, out to Green Street, force main, down Green Street toward Hartford Turnpike. We're proposing to put a new gravity manhole in Green Street near Hartford Turnpike. The force main from, that will have the sewer from the whole project will tie into that gravity manhole, and then a connection will be made from that new manhole to the existing sewer infrastructure at Hartford Turnpike. So that's how that connection is proposed to be made. And again, the sewer has also been coordinated and will continue to be coordinated in our discussions with the DPW. Similarly, we've had discussions with Selco regarding electric supply to the project. They've indicated there will be no issues servicing this project with the existing infrastructure, electrical infrastructure in Green Street, which is what we're proposing. And I want to point out that the buildings, the project is proposed to be entirely electric, so no natural gas is proposed to the project. These are all electric buildings. Next slide, please. So lastly, I want to address stormwater. That's a big part of this project and any project, really. So the design incorporates a comprehensive stormwater management system. The system proposed includes measures to treat stormwater and also to control stormwater, so to mitigate the flow of runoff to the wetlands and ultimately to abutting properties. Treatment measures include bio-retention areas, infiltration areas, detention, and the project does incorporate numerous sustainable and low-impact development techniques. Just to run through some of those, so the site design was, the site was designed to fit with the natural terrain of the land. So this site, as you saw in the existing conditions survey, has a lot of topography to it, so it was critical that we designed the road network, the building orientation, the types of buildings, all to work with that topography as best as we could. So the layout of the roadways, the grades of the roadways, the buildings, so they have at the, the garage ends are lower because the garage is underneath the residential floors, so orientating the buildings so that low end is where it wants to be relative to the topography, those types of things to work with the terrain of this site. Again, I've mentioned it, the impervious surfaces were minimized predominantly through the underground parking. So that, having the parking underneath the buildings, that accounts for about 2.6 acres of impervious area that would have otherwise been on the surface. So again, it's significant. Also sidewalks were only, we have sidewalks running throughout the site, but only on one side of the road as opposed to two sides of the road, just to save that impervious area without compromising on pedestrian circulation. The yard areas around each of the buildings were kept to a minimum, and that helps decrease the limit of work. So there is some yard area, you need some yard area just for the building to be able to function, but they were kept to a minimum. Also saves on, you know, irrigation, that type of thing to maintain the landscaping. So that's considered a low-impact development technique as well. Relative to the number of housing units proposed, 300 units, this is actually a very compact development. So of the roughly 37-acre site that this project is on, this project, the development envelope utilizes about 17 acres of that. So about 20 acres remains completely untouched, so no grading landscaping is completely untouched, which is more than half the site. And then if you factor in the untouched plus what will be disturbed but then landscaped, so the green, you know, the green space, if you will, is about 30 acres of the 37, which is more than 80% of the site. So there'll be a significant amount of green space in the end on this project. I mentioned the design utilizes bio-retention. Mr. McGoldrick had reached out to the Pulte team at one point recently and asked about the idea of microbasins, and if that's something that we could look at. So basically, those are techniques that can be used in a design such as this, that create, in addition to the main stormwater areas, create just small decentralized little pockets and pools and puddles intentionally, just to maintain or to help maintain stormwater quality and reduce flow, reduce erosion. The idea being if you have enough of these, it does add up and actually make a difference on the site. So I will say that's not something that currently we've incorporated into the site, but we've looked into it more since you sent that information, which we appreciate, and we're happy to continue that discussion and consider those, and we thought perhaps working with the, we understand the project is going out to peer review and perhaps working through that process as well, that's something that we could look at incorporating into the design, certainly. The proposal, or submission, I should say, did include a comprehensive stormwater report with calculations and a narrative, an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater system as well. We do understand it's been sent, is being sent out or has been sent out to peer review? Graves Engineering, perhaps?
Yeah, has been sent out, yep.
Okay. So we look forward to working through that process with them and with the board as we move forward. So that concludes my engineering presentation. I'll turn it back to Essex. I know he wanted to perhaps recap sustainability elements of the project, touch on architecture, and touch on traffic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, and just as we're going through the details, and I know Matt included quite a bit in that, his discussion, but I just wanted to take a quick second to pull out some of those elements of sustainability and green building. You know, over the past 20 years or so, those have grown from, you know, buzzwords and fringe market to really major decisions that drive, you know, facets of our everyday-to-day life, and Pulte really does a good job of building that into our mindset, you know, from the get-go of every, each of our projects, and we're committed to building environmentally sensitive communities from our land acquisition process through land planning, construction, and operation. During each of these phases, we work to identify and manage risks and opportunities to really take advantage of the site. For instance, from the site planning perspective, the inclusion of the underground parking, again, as Matt mentioned, it not only reduces the overall footprint of the site construction, but it significantly decreases the amount of impervious surfaces that will be, and which, you know, reduces the amount of stormwater needed to be managed. Building electrification, again, just to put that point in, there, these buildings will be completely electrified, meaning electric heat pumps and electric hot water heaters, so no propane, natural gas, and no building emissions. As Matt mentioned, we will be providing electric vehicle charging stations in each of the underground garages as well as in each of the surface parking lots. And from energy-efficient smart appliances to advanced insulation and low e-glass windows, we're integrating new building projects and processes into each of our home, excuse me, home construction standards. The home plans have been optimized to, for material content and ease of construction and minimize job construction site waste. We install low-flow fixtures in our bathrooms and our kitchens to ensure water conservation, and as Matt mentioned, we vow strict compliance or exceedance with stormwater management standards through various low-impact development, stormwater management elements. As was included in the application package, these are just some samples of the architecture that we prepared for the Ammon Run neighborhood. We've had a lot of success in the area with similar styles. They've been well-received by neighbors, municipalities, and then eventual homeowners. Some of the, just to touch on a few of the highlights, there's, you know, these have a defined front entrance. There's elevator access to each floor, which provides single-floor living. The elevator access also accesses the garage as well, so you would, in theory, would be able to get from your car in the garage all the way up to, if you're on the fourth floor or whichever floor it is. Use of stone and composite accents to add variety to exterior materials. There are recessed balconies and box bays that add projections to improve shading as well as aesthetics. The affordable units will be seamlessly distributed throughout the buildings with no adjustments to materials, style, or design of the units, essentially be unnoticed. We have years of experiencing and developing communities in the region, as Mark mentioned, and through that experience, we have continually updated and modernized our architecture based on building innovations, but importantly also based on homeowner feedback. And we do feel that the, this, the architecture that these buildings present will fit well in the neighborhood. So just to quickly touch on next steps, based on coordination with Chris and Louise in the planning department, what we were looking at for potential future meetings and kind of focused on specific topics at the end of January, looking at another, a deeper dive into the site plan and then stormwater report, ideally getting the opportunity to have received and responded to peer review on the stormwater report. Also, traffic impact analysis, as I mentioned, MDM Transportation will be providing, or has provided our analysis, and then will be responding to comment, any comments in the peer review, excuse me, the peer review from the traffic impact peer reviewer. And then the meeting in March, we'll be looking forward to speaking in detail on the water and sewer improvements, the infrastructure, and we'll have Cofflin Environmental here with us to talk in details about that and also respond to any comments from the peer reviewer on that. And with that, I'd like to, you know, turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Just a procedural point, I know we have some members in our audience that are waiting to be heard, I just want to let you know, we will open it up to public comments just in a minute, okay? Mr. McGoldrick, any, I know we have some tasks at hand tonight, did you want to talk about those now?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Just pulling up the memo that Louise prepared with those. So there's a couple housekeeping items, primarily just delegating peer review process and management of that, paying invoices to the planning department. Obviously, that's kind of background work, just a little bit of a detail on that. So we have selected the consultants. So we have selected the consultants that will be doing the peer review for the town. We did send them over the documents for them to begin that, and that's what formed this draft of future meetings. So we have the reports that have been provided by the applicant, our peer reviews, which are retained by the town, will then take a look at those and provide comments back. And we should have those well in advance of these meetings. If any, you know, response is warranted from the applicant, they'll have that back and forth and have that presentation then wrapped up for those meeting dates. We do hold those, you know, some flexibility as we go through that peer review process. We may need to adjust those dates, but that's to give us a view of what we're anticipating for topics, help us to narrow discussion at each meeting rather than kind of get lost in the project as a whole. So that's, I think, the major.
We have a waiver for two hard copies.
Correct, thank you. Yep. The waiver for the two copies, obviously, we have kind of the digital copies now, so.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, okay. All right.
So that's a vote, and then also is the delegation, delegating the management of peer reviewers a vote?
That was the peer review process, yeah. So just in terms of, you know, certainly the peer reviews would still be responsive to the boards, those materials will be provided, but just the essential, the day-to-day management of those invoices would go to the planning department.
Great.
Okay. Let's keep it the board level for now, and then we'll open it up to public comments. Anything?
Sure. And I'd just say, I think it's fantastic to see all of the thoughtful planning that's gone into this, especially with regard to environmental issues, electrification, minimizing impervious surface area, native species planting, all these things are fantastic. One thing that caught my eye, I just noticed that the exterior cladding products that are, that you're proposing are almost all fossil fuel-based, require things like plasticizers, like the alloys and heavy metals. And so I'd be interested, it would be fantastic if you'd also consider sustainable alternatives to the exterior cladding things, but I don't want to lose the forest for the trees here. I think it's really terrific to see the sustainability steps and the green building steps. It's terrific.
Well, thank you, point taken.
Dan?
I agree with Peter. I like that the footprint of the project will minimize destruction to trees and, you know, all of the good habitat that we have. I like the underground parking instead of parking lots, I think that's really important. And I look forward to hearing more. I appreciate that you've put so much time and energy into the presentation today so we can start moving forward as quickly as possible.
I was gonna say the same thing as you, and I appreciate the presentation very thorough and informative, so we appreciate that on our end. And I know it's a big space and you could have done a lot more with it, but I appreciate that getting the 300 units and floor area ratio you've used was considerate to how much space you are using.
David?
Thank you for your presentation. It was incredibly well detailed and also concise, I appreciate that. Yeah, as others have said, I like the underground parking, that's something that is frequently run away from. And as was said about some of the other environmental concerns, like the stormwater, I mean, you are right up against the wetlands there, so I'm looking forward to the stormwater meeting. That's really all I have.
Matt, you don't get that very often.
Matt's very excited about that.
Yeah.
He speaks for all of us when he says we're all excited about the stormwater.
I am looking forward to the architectural aspect of this, I will tell you. And I would, I would just say, you know, kudos to you, very, very well-informed first out-of-the-gay presentation, thank you. I think you've covered pretty much everything we could ask you to cover. I do agree that the 20 acres of untouched land, amazing, and then the 30 acres of green space, the sustainability aspects are all exactly what we are hoping for. We love that you're working in sync with the town, and there seems to be a good communication happening back and forth, that's the best that we could ask for, and we appreciate that. This can tend to be a long process, and we can get into the weeds as we know. So I think because we've done so many 40Bs in town, we've gotten it down to, and this is more for the public, we've gotten it down to a process where each meeting will discuss one certain aspect of the project. Certainly, this is about public commentary as well, so we do want to open up the meeting and allow time for that. I would just respectfully ask, and I know this is a hard ask, but sometimes, especially if you're in a butter, there can be a lot of concerns that you have, and we are hearing and listening, and they are too. So just concise, to the point, and not trying to keep our things within the confines of what the meetings are intended for. But you've done a great job. I have one question, and I'm just, this is curious, the roadway proposed between Green and South Street, is that a, is it an easement? Tell me a little bit about that.
So what we are going to be doing as PULTI is that we will be donating that piece of property to the town of Shrewsbury. And then Chris is going to work with various departments within the town of Shrewsbury to take it from that point on. But we've been, you know, through initial coordination and conversation, identified a location that makes sense to help the town achieve certain goals. And so through coordination with the town and other, you know, DPW and other various agencies, we did identify that location, and that specific parcel was identified for that purpose.
And the intention, I assume, is to direct traffic to the light?
So if I can kind of touch on that a little bit, so in terms of the relationship of that to this specific project, the applicant, you know, so the, in terms of going for the 40B as a friendly 40B, that was one of the asks of our town, is to be provided that specific roadway. I do know that their traffic report does take into account a build, no build in terms of analysis of that, but that portion of it, the design and the construction of that is wholly separate from this project. So, you know, the board would proceed that whether that road is built or not is kind of separate from this project. So they, they do look at if it is in terms of their traffic analysis, but we must, you know, for this process here, we could operate on the assumption that it either will be at a future date or not, but that's a town process, that'll be done separately outside of this process.
Am I getting into the weeds? Is that what you're telling me?
A little bit.
In a very nice way? I'm just curious.
I think there's concern with some left-hand turns onto Route 20 from South Street, it being unsignalized. I think it's been deemed a safety concern, and it has been for a while. So I think the goal of the connection is to get people from the South Street side to the safe signal, which has plenty of capacity for, for that.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
Right.
Okay. I think we've covered the board questions. I'd like to open it up to public discussion. If there is anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter, you can step forward. We'd ask you to step forward, if you could, to the microphone.
Oh, the mic?
Yes, please. And if you could identify yourself by your name and your address, it would be helpful.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Greg Smith. I reside at 20 Appaloosa Drive in Shrewsbury. I'm one of the butters. In fact, I'm on one of the maps there that you showed. You should have seen the water coming down the hill today. There's actually a stream coming down there. But in any event, my question is, I attended the meeting on the, I think it was the 7th of November, and it was said at that point in time, you were going to put together a lot of material and send it to us, to the butters. Nobody's gotten anything. All we got was the preliminary information, which was rather lacking, at the November 7th meeting.
You want me to take that one?
Yeah, so we have set up a project page for this. We did not, you know, there's extensive materials that were provided as part of this application. We didn't mail those out to the applicants, but, you know, you did get the meeting notice, and what I would encourage you to do is go to the town website. We have a project page set up for this where you can see all of the materials that were provided, all of the reports. We'll keep that updated again as the peer review process goes on, as those are provided. So, you know, we won't be mailing out those materials directly, but.
So we go to the website and pull up?
Yeah, and you'll be able to get a live view. As we have it, you'll have it.
That's fine. Now, you know, one of the comments I wanted to make, and I think it's going to be a major problem, is the traffic patterns. You know, I mean, you put, you know, it's not just 500 cars. It's, a lot of people are going to have two cars, they're going to have a kid, you know, it's going to be, people basically have two incomes. So the, both husband and wife will be working, and then it'll be children having their car. You're going to have probably about 700 cars there. And going out the street, I mean, it's a mess already. And I know the idea was interjected that you put a rotary there. Can you imagine? That's going to be a mess. But that's being passed along to the town, as I understand it.
So I'm going to ask just a quick question. Mr. Smith, respectfully, our February 26 meeting.
Yeah.
Is going to entirely revolve around the review of traffic impact.
Okay.
Of which.
So that's going to be an important factor.
Yes, and duly noted, and I do hope you're listening to him, but I do want to just invite you back to that meeting, that it will be a really important.
Yeah, because I mean, as it is now, it's very dangerous, and, you know, you put all those cars in there, they're little streets.
No, and if I'm okay, is it okay?
Yes, please.
Sorry, so Mr., to your point, you're absolutely correct. And so as part of the materials that you will find on that project website.
Yeah.
Is the traffic impact analysis that you are able to access and download and read through. And the town in this process hires another outside engineer.
Yeah, I think I met him at the November 7th meeting, right?
That's our engineer?
Oh, that's your engineer?
Yeah, that's Bob.
I thought it was M. something.
Bob Micho with MDM.
MDM, yeah.
So I don't know who the town has hired, but the town has hired a separate engineer to basically review Bob's work, MDM's work, and to provide comments. And what Bob will, MDM will then end up doing is respond to those comments, and at that meeting on the 26th, will be an opportunity to speak to both the initial, original traffic analysis report, the peer reviewers' comments, and then MDM's response to those comments.
Okay, well, that would be interesting, because I really don't have confidence you're going to be able to do something with Route 20 and that little green street and South Street.
And just on that one quick point, I do want to note that, I know that there's some cued infusion because there's a 25% design for Mastop for Route 20, which includes potentially multiple rotaries. This is, this intersection is not one of those locations, so part of that analysis that you will see is the existing signal currently has the capacity, as it's signaled today, to accommodate the traffic.
Will it be like the Big Dig?
It depends on how you.
I put up with that for years.
The Big Dig today is a success, right? So.
Yeah, if you don't look at the costs.
Fair enough.
Well, you know, the other question I had had to do with, I may be getting into weeds a little bit, so tell me if I am, but with 40B. Now, these are going to be sold to people. There's going to be 75, say, families that are paying less than the other families for it. Are there restrictions on them, A, renting it out to somebody, or selling it in a year?
Yeah.
No, because I'm concerned about how that all works.
There are absolutely restrictions on those.
And how do you enforce that?
There are requirements placed on each of those units that are identified, so the state has, it's called the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which regulates, and they set, they identify which of the units will.
Are low-priced? Yeah.
And when that unit is identified by EOHLC, it is then deeded as that. And Stephanie, I want you to call you into it, because I don't want to say it's in perpetuity, but I'll let you speak to that.
To the chair, if I may, provide a quick response. In response to your question, what happens is there's, this is being proposed pursuant to 40B, and there's a component of 40B that the subsidizing agency, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities administers, and then there's the kind of the local that the ZPA does, and it's a comprehensive permit, being all local permits. Your question is a little bit more on the subsidizing agency role, but it's a good question.
Well, the operating issue associated with somebody buys it, two years later they want to sell it.
Sure.
They paid 30% less than anybody else, now they're making a huge profit.
So that does not happen, actually.
Yeah.
What happens is the units, the affordable units, they'll all be subject to, first of all, an affordable fair marketing plan.
Yeah.
To make certain that qualified people are the actual first home buyers. Then your question is on resale of those. Each of those affordable units, they're subject to a deed righter that it's to remain affordable. So the, if an eligible family buys an affordable unit and they go to resell it, it's being conveyed as an affordable unit.
So they have basically some parameters in terms of what they can sell it for?
That's right, yes.
So it's probably all percentages, isn't it?
Pretty much.
Like you can't mark it up more than 20% from what you paid, or something along those lines.
That's right, I mean, it all kind of, I mean, there can be a little bit, like, depending on how the interest rate and inflation. But it's still going to be eligible to, and the criteria is individuals and families earning 8% of the area income, so that stays through it, and that will be enforced.
Because I could just picture abuses in that.
Point of order, point of order. Mr. McGoldrick's going to.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out that this is getting a little bit conversational. I do want to, you know, flow the conversation through the board, and although I appreciate kind of going into the details of specifically the 40B.
The devil's in the details.
I know. So what I'll say is, in regards to this application, you know, being a 40B, there will be a condition that it provides the marketing plan and that they're deed restricted in accordance with the rules and regulations of EOHLC. So that is a kind of a state, and that department's matter. I know they're very diligent in terms of those.
Okay, well, I'll believe you.
I'd be happy to have that conversation of those details offline, because it is important to understand.
I have one last question. What really is in this for the town of Shrewsbury? I know you have to have so many, you know, affordable housing units opened up, or you're penalized by the state and the federal government, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you really are obligated to open up as much affordable housing as you possibly can.
So Chris, can you address where we're at in the affordable housing world in Shrewsbury?
Correct.
And where this is going to get us?
Yeah, so we're currently right around a little over 6% in terms of our subsidized housing inventory. What this will contribute to, the town subsidized housing inventory is the 75 affordable designated units upon approval of the board. Part of the process here that we're pursuing is a friendly 40B. What that is, is that's essentially a process by which the developer comes to the town and looks at how they can tailor their project to the specific objectives of the community. So as the applicant detailed, I think very well, in one of their initial slides, is some of the initial conversations that were had with town departments, with the select board, developing, you know, development agreements in terms of looking at this project and how do we address the needs and the direction of the community for providing these. As you know, you know, in terms of our 40B provisions, we're not currently under safe harbor, so that means that we are subject to 40B proposals. So a denial of the board if you're not under safe harbor typically would then be appealed to the Housing Appeals Court. If you're not in the safe harbor provisions, it's very hard for the community to win on that. And so by doing the friendly B 40, friendly 40B process, you're able to better tailor these projects towards the community goals, which in this process, I believe we have. You also are able to contribute towards the SHI, which this would help for us to achieve temporary safe harbor provisions. And so by doing that, by being selective in projects that come through the friendly 40B process, you're able to, you know, be in a better position to negotiate for additional friendly 40Bs in that temporary process until you can achieve the 10%. What that does, that allows you to, again, be in a better negotiating position.
So the goal is to get a 40%, then? I mean, to get a 10% in theory?
Safe harbor.
Correct. I think the short-term goal is the safe harbor provisions, but again, I don't want to, I don't want to hinge it entirely on that. I do think that in this process, you know, again, the friendly 40B process, we have looked at this project and worked diligently with the applicant to tailor it towards the community needs, so. So I actually think that, you know, the safe harbor provisions, obviously, are, are a strategy that the community is, is looking to utilize in order to, you know, better negotiate on these projects. But that's, in the scale of this project, that's actually a small piece. We have worked really diligently in terms of looking at some of the improvements that can be made in terms of, you know, water and sewer, in terms of the amenity space, in terms of.
But that's not going to benefit.
The end of the town for, you know, future roadway improvement.
That's not going to benefit you, that's going to benefit the.
One other, what, okay, one second, I want to touch on two, but I wanted to answer the original question and add to what Chris said. And just, you know, that these are all homeownership units, and currently, the affordable inventory within the town of Shrewsbury, from a homeownership perspective in particular, is incredibly low. And, you know, these are homes that people are going to be proud of, and that people that, that are able to get into these homes in that affordable unit will be proud to live there, and it's currently an inventory that is, that is significantly low as far as what the town of Shrewsbury offers. So that is one element that will benefit the.
Well, I can understand that, but it seems to me, rather than crashing a farm.
So.
You, you know, it's a lot better to do it.
Mr. Smith, though, the process is you have to go through the chair, and it, as to Mr. McGoldrick's point, it can become conversational, and we get it, we understand this, we've been sat through many.
Well, I can tell you, all the butters are very upset about.
We, and we, and that's why the process is really important.
Using 40B to try to change the zoning requirements.
Okay. Well, I, is there any other points pertinent to what we have on the table tonight?
Points that you want to answer?
Well, no, it's not that.
Mr. Smith, with all respect, this is a.
Or you want to answer in a way I can understand them?
This is a public meeting that has procedures, we'd ask you to please respect the process, okay?
Well, I have, I've listened to this great sales pitch, it was very smooth.
Okay, all right.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter?
I would just suggest, just quickly in, in light of those comments, that Mr. Smith reviewed the fiscal impact analysis that was done. It projects 644,000 net in additional tax revenue for the town each year. This isn't, this isn't how this works, I'm sorry.
This is not a conversation. Offline, you're welcome to have conversations offline.
Just a suggestion to take a look at it.
Please, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Shamila Seventeen, 71 Green Street, so I'm going to be adjoining property.
71 Green Street, got it.
So I like the development idea, because I've been living in that area. But my question is regarding having 300 new residents, will this property be fenced in, or how do I maintain my privacy is my concern here?
So, yes, that we do anticipate, we do plan on having a privacy fence around the, and I apologize, I'm not, 71, are you directly uphill from?
Correct, right.
So, yeah, we absolutely do plan to have a privacy fence in that location. The, the current plans show it at a, at a high level, but as we get further on the process, we're certainly will be shared, will be, will provide and share better details and designs of what it will look like.
And how high and all those details will be provided, because if I, if I choose to put up a fence, so that's what I would like to do.
So I believe that this is going to come up at our January 29th meeting, a site review, is that, is that fair?
That's fair, we can plan to have that, that, that detail, that will show specifically what that fence will look like for that meeting, for sure.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I would like to be included.
Great, please come back. Anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Hello.
Hello.
Chris Finale, 5 Appaloosa Drive, I was not at the November 9th meeting, so apologies. And just tell me if this is one of the questions, I can go to one of the other meetings, but I don't see it up there. My children are not going to high school here, but I'm asking anyway, the impact of this just to the public school system, which, again, I don't have any numbers to back me up, but seems to be over, close to the overcrowding, if you will. But maybe this is another topic for another day.
It's not that it's another topic, that was reviewed at the select board hearings, which I would highly recommend that you listen to. Not to put the answer off, but I just want to make sure that you provided enough information, Chris.
If I may, I just want to speak to that a little bit, so I, I do think it's a, it's an important concern. Anytime there's larger housing developments, you know, that is a frequent topic that's brought up. EOHLC has long held that boards cannot consider schoolchildren in their, rendering their decisions. What they see is, is if a board hinges a decision upon that, they see that as discrimination against children and families. However, anyone feels about that. An important note that, you know, we do, you know, as a, as a town, understand that, and as staff, understanding the concern to address that, we do regularly track and monitor the actual schoolchildren that are attending from higher density housing developments. We do provide an annual memo to the select board showing from some of our preliminary analysis versus what the actual year-to-year habitation of student-aged children is. I will be updating that shortly for the select board, but you can look at some of the past years. We do find that typically these developments do not develop the numbers of schoolchildren that you typically would think that they do, in terms of the units, where people say that, you know, each one will have a kid. They're much, much more conservative, but again, basing that judgment and data, we do have that, and those actual Shrewsbury-specific numbers. And I'd be happy to provide that to anyone who's, would like to, to look at that.
And I do offer you to, to look at the materials on the, our project website, because in part of the fiscal impact study, we did do an analysis that also includes past multi-projects, as was shown. We do a lot of these, these are one-bedroom and two-bedroom primarily units. There are eight three-bedroom units as part of this, but primarily, they're one- and two-bedroom unit condominiums. And as much as I could sit here and tell you that we typically don't see that, if you refer to that fiscal impact study, it actually shows the, the data associated with those, with other developments that we've done.
So, and I will do that, but since I have you guys here, and you guys are probably the experts on the numbers, just a easy, hopefully easy yes or no. Does that analysis say that you would have to build additional infrastructure to address new people coming in for kids in the school district?
So I, I don't want to make an analysis off the cuff, I'd have to look at those numbers in the terms of this, the context of this site, and the comparable developments in the community, so I don't want to make that assessment off the cuff, but.
I just wanted to ask, because I'd be looking at those numbers, and I would be doing that in my head. But the fact that you won't be, you, you aren't comfortable doing that, then I'm not going to go do that, because I would have.
If it's helpful, the elementary school in that district enrollment has decreased by 27% since.
Is that floral, or is that floral?
Yeah, so in terms of capacity, I mean.
Okay.
And the challenge to do that analysis, we're talking about just one project, right? So you're, you're asking encompasses a variety of different, you know, projects or graduating students and whatnot, so it's a deeper analysis.
Another question, from a timeline perspective, if everything went the way you guys were hoping, which never does. But when would you guys be looking to start breaking ground?
We'd be looking to start breaking ground in Q3 2025.
Okay.
24, I'm sorry, yeah, the end of 2024, with getting some residents in there and towards.
I like his answer better, though. I like the 2025.
So towards Q3 2025 is so, my bad, that's really one where people.
Breaking, breaking ground 24 people, okay, okay. Okay. I'm looking forward to the traffic one, because that's going to be interesting.
Yeah, please, we welcome that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir, can you please state your name for the record, address as well?
David Singer, 400 South Street. One question I have, actually, that I would just propose to the board, I don't abut this property directly, I live right off of Route 20 and South Street. I've been in front of this board and many other boards, is that during the Centec North buildout, with the drainage, with dispersment, with impervious areas, everything was supposed to become better. I can tell you today, I know, we've had a lot of rain this year, water tables are high. If you took a walk into my backyard, the little stream is a running river. I don't know what, this is contributing to the development, how much water is now not being absorbed, but this is beyond anything. I've been there for 30 years, and the astronomical amount of water, so I would just say to the board, really pay attention to drainage, to the residents in the area, really pay attention to drainage, because what they say will work, there's really no proof that it does, and there's no proof as yet to what is really happening in my backyard with the major flooding that's coming into my property that we've never had before. So that, I would just like to say in general.
As a point of order, Mr. Singer, I just would tell you, January 29th, they intend on approaching the topic of stormwater, so.
Yeah, that's fine, and, and also, and again, I've been through these boards, I know this is an initial process. I'm traveling, February 26th, when the traffic impact study is coming up. So if we can't request a change to either push that forward, I'll be around at the end of every month after that. I would just like to make a couple of quick comments.
No, I, I, I apologize, I, Chris?
So what I'd recommend, again, all the materials will be provided online, we do record all of these hearings, those will be included.
I did look at the traffic study today, and I've, with other traffic studies. One suggestion I would just like to make, for the safety sake of all, to make that intersection safer, give Green Street its own lighted green light, give South Street its own lighted green light, like they do as to Route 9. Nobody knows how to do a right-of-way, nobody knows how to use their turn signals, there's been so many accidents on that road from.
Thank you, but if I could finish my comment, what I recommend is, is that, you know, we do record these meetings, so everything will be provided online. In addition to coming to the hearings, you can also provide your comments in writing. Those do go to the applicant and to the board, we'll also include those on the project page, and we'll be happy to address those as needed, but.
Is there any way to change the meeting date of the traffic impact?
No, there's.
So, I mean, as you can imagine, this is a very onerous process, and it's lengthy. We do appreciate in writing comments, we do read them, they're in a shared drive, and they are very helpful. So I would recommend that if you do have comments, and it sounds like you do, put them in writing and get them over.
I will do that, one thing this town does extremely well, including Mr. McGoldrick, and right on through, they're very good at the responses, getting back and, and getting to that, so I appreciate that. But I also want to at least get that.
Sure.
Exchange of lights to green is one, just one way to.
Yep.
To make everything safer, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that wishes to be heard? Sir?
Hello, my name's Alex DeVivo, I'm on a butter at 14 Appaloosa Drive. I'll keep my comments brief, I think Mr. Smith and the rest of my neighbors here probably touched on most of what I would, you know, echo as concerns. I think a four-story building, as it relates to my property, it, it would be on the top of a very tall hill. And, you know, just thinking about a rural sub-farm division, you know, as it exists now, you know, I, I don't think that this plan as, as designed necessarily keeps the intent of what that property, you know, has been protected under. The conservation issues are definitely, you know, displaced some wildlife, and there's turkeys and other animals in the area. Soil conditions and erosion have, have been a big problem. I can, you know, be a witness to the last gentleman that spoke that, having driven down South Street earlier this evening, it was flooded, like feet of water. And then the traffic concerns, I have a two and a four-year-old, our street has become more or less a racetrack for cars going from South Street, the Al Hamra School, everyone has to go out, you know, the other way now because of the dangerousness of people taking lefts onto Route 20, so. I don't have much more to add, other than what everyone else has already discussed, but, you know, I'll be interested to see the, the follow-up reports, but all of these things are concerning to me as well.
So I would follow up on your comment, and just invite, please be involved in this process, and I think you will find when the peer review starts, and they really delve into the specifics on the traffic impact, that is really where the information's going to be important, and it is a public meeting, and we welcome your input, so please be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Please step to the microphone if you could.
I have to.
We, yeah, it's a public meeting, we have to hear you, we could bring it to you.
That would be good.
I just want to know, who do we write to?
So are you 20 Appaloosa?
Yes, 20 Appaloosa. Joyce Smith.
So, so who do you direct your comments to?
Yes, you said we could write for information and make comments, who do we do that to?
So I'm going to ask Chris to respond to that, Chris?
So it would be zba staff@shrewsburyma.gov.
We can write it down for you after the meeting, if that would be helpful.
Yep, and we also, we also have regular office hours in the planning department and building department. So you'd be able to, you know, handwritten letters, or if you wanted to show up and discuss in person, we're, we're there during regular office hours, we're happy to.
And are you there most times?
Sorry?
Are you there most times?
If I'm not, usually the assistant planner or other staff is there to, to assist, so.
Okay.
But certainly, if you wanted to email or, or call, we're, we're happy to set up appointments as well.
Thank you.
I, I would say it is, again, just to say it again, very helpful for all of us involved in the process to hear and to be able to read your comments. Really helpful, so we encourage you to do that. Please, we need your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Castanelli, 540 South Street, Shrewsbury. And I, everybody touched on exactly why I'm here. Actually, I was going to come here and ask if there could be a speed bump put on South Street, because it is being used as a racetrack at night, and also, they have cut-throughs because of the train station. Where I live, I'm a direct butter, right, right to you.
Yep, yeah.
The wetlands, horrible, my land is totally flooded now. And when I have to leave my house because of that, you can't take a left, I actually go around where they live to get the light, because it is very dangerous. And I just hope that you keep all that, I know that you will, keep it all in mind. But I, I really am concerned about the wetlands that are in back, if they're just going to be left like that, or. Because it is, I mean, people throw things in there and.
Well, obviously, there's nothing that we can do about that trash, but that.
No, no.
The portion of the property that you're talking about, and that portion of the property is proposed to be untouched from what we're doing, that whole section in that back, so that, that would be preserved.
Okay, well, it brings me to another, I have trees that are on that land that are now going over my house. And the wind today, I was afraid, and I don't know where, where I should go with that, to have, I mean, because they are definitely going to fall. Because they're just leaning.
And today was certainly.
I, I was, I know, I couldn't believe it was.
So, but we, you know, as we're out there, we can certainly kind of, as we're looking around the property and getting a better sense once we get, you know, boots on the ground, technically, and get an understanding of what the situation is.
Well, you're certain, you know, I, I'm just concerned with the traffic, the wetland. And I, I really think there needs to be a, a bump in that road, because everybody's cutting through to go to Westboro, I mean, it's not like a little country road anymore.
Let me just say, February 26th, make sure you put it on your calendar, that's going to be the, the whole meeting is going to be dedicated to traffic impact, and a lot of this will be covered at that meeting, but if there's something that you wanted to add to the conversation.
No, I just wanted to make sure that my statements are there too, because I know, like, I go up around their neighborhood every single day, so I'm sure every, every single person takes that turn up there, which.
You have a race car.
What?
It's your race car.
Oh, yeah. No, I don't.
Thank you.
I have post-traumatic stress disorder, because I was in almost a fatal accident, no.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay, so, just as a, yeah, if you could just hang out until the end of the meeting, you're welcome to chat. So next steps, board, is to, we need to request a waiver for two hard copies, and we also need to discuss the peer review from the Planning and Economic Development Department. How do we procedurally, just make a motion?
Yeah, just a motion and vote, and just on the peer review, I did fail to mention, so we'll also, we applied for a grant with MHP, Mass Housing Partnership, seeking $10,000 for an additional third-party consultant. So that would be no funding to the applicant or the town, and that provides a third party, just in, in terms of process, just to oversee and help with some of the kind of staffing matters. So they'll, they'll provide an attorney that is not a representative of the town or of the applicant, but a third-party attorney, just to help oversee the process, so. We're hoping for a favorable grant of that, likely to see that early January, one way or the other.
Okay, all right, so can I get someone to propose a motion?
And we don't have to close the public hearing, right, because it's ongoing?
No, it would be.
Continuation.
Forever, okay. I move to accept the request for a waiver to submit only two hard copies.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
And then I move to delegate management of peer reviewers to the Planning and Economic Development Department.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we look forward to next month's meeting, which will be January 29th, so we welcome everyone back again, thank you.
Thank you.
Might I get a formal motion to close the public hearing, please? Might I get a formal motion to close the public hearing, please?
Or I move to adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn the meeting, thank you.
A second, second to adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved, thank you. Do not leave me.